Six o'clock and I'd like to call this special meeting of the person Board of County Commissioners to order at this time and recognize that we have a quorum and this is, of course, as stated, a public hearing. Normally when we have speakers, we do have a time limit and I'd like for the board someone to make a motion about a time limit here tonight. Previously with some other business of this nature at public hearings, we have had about a three-minute time limit because there would be a sizable number of speakers. So I'd like for someone from the board to make a motion that we set a time limit here of probably three minutes. Again, that goes in accordance with what we did with Dominion and some others.
Chair and Chairperson, would you like to make a motion that we allow three minutes per individual?
Okay, three minutes then. We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? If you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. So this public hearing is for consideration of approval to close a portion of State Road 1333 known as Country Club Road and we need a motion to go into the public hearing at this time?
So moved.
Have a motion to go into the public hearing, into discussion. If you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. And a presentation will be by EDC Director Brandy Lynch.
As soon as IT gets the presentation queued up, where are we going?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again tonight and review the information I provided at the September sixteenth Person County Board of Commissioners meeting. I will also provide more information, answers to more questions that have been received on the proposed road closure of thirty-eight hundred feet of State Road thirteen thirty-three, also known as Country Club Road. Of special note, the proposed road closure will not affect the intersection of Country Club and Edwin Robertson Road. There will still be a straight path from Edwin Robertson to Highway five oh one. The county began work on the Person County Mega Park almost a decade ago. Duke Energy evaluated the site for a project known as Project Trace. You can learn more about Project Trace on the Person County EDC website in the Mega Park presentation. We made this, what made this approximately thirteen hundred and fifty acres attractive? Power. The Person County Mega Park is unique in that it has multiple two thirty KV lines going through it. The reason for the multiple two thirty KV lines is that the Person County Mega Park is between two energy, Duke Energy power plants, locally known as HEICO and Mayo. Person County ultimately did not get Project Trace, but the seed was planted. The county started to look at the Person County Mega Park and what an opportunity for the county it was. The county began due diligence work and engineering work. The maps before you tonight are conceptual maps that were drawn in twenty seventeen. Please note, the plan showed State Road thirteen thirty-three being abandoned. Duke Energy also recognized the uniqueness of the site, explained in a letter that was provided online for you all with Duke, with John Nels with Duke Energy. North Carolina Department of Commerce Rule Readiness Site Program paid for a water line brought to the site. This is a twelve-inch water line with a capacity of five million gallons a day if needed. Other positives are the site, are the location. The Mega Park is just miles away from Highway five oh one, close to multiple colleges, and an hour away from an international airport. Person County Mega Park is one of only six left in the state. It was touted as a North Carolina certified site until January of twenty twenty-four. The Person County Mega Park lost its certification because the county needed to hold a minimum of a two-year option on the site. I've told you some positive about, positives about the Person County Mega Park and now I will tell you some negatives. Topography. There is a hundred-foot drop. I apologize. Last week I used the wrong wording and said degree drop and I was told numerous times that I used the wrong word and I did. It was just an oversight. So it's a hundred-foot drop from the center of Country Club Road to the bottom of the site. As you know, approximately thirteen hundred and fifty acres are included in the Person County Mega Park. However, only nine hundred and forty-eight are usable acres. There are numerous wetlands on the site and rail. Rail's another issue. There's rail near the site that can be assessed, but the rail line to the site will, would have to be owned and maintained by the tenant. The Norfolk and Southern Rail Line would need upgrades that the tenant may have to pay for. Person County is also not on an interstate. In twenty twenty-two, Governor Cooper set aside funds to complete a NC mega site readiness program. The pro, the reason for this program was to make large sites more shovel-ready. So many large projects were announced in North Carolina, which is wonderful, but it left North Carolina with fewer available sites to market. The need for large sites was not slowing down. North Carolina needed to get more sites identified and ready. There were five sites chosen and one's shovel-ready site. The Person County Mega Park was not selected. Why not? Because of the parameters of the evaluation. The state wanted a contiguous site with a thousand acres or more and the Person County Mega Park is not. It is made up of three different parcels with two roads running through it. Next, there had to be a million available workers within a specific radius. Please note, the criteria used to evaluate the sites were not given until after the submissions. However, it is available online if anyone would like to read the report in full detail. After the evaluation was complete and the sites were chosen, the county could speak with groups that performed the analysis to hear their feedback on the Person County Mega Park. Person County learned our strengths: power, water. Our weaknesses: topography, no interstate. Two things the county could do nothing about. However, we continue to keep working. It was reported in twenty twenty-one the county had already invested over two million dollars in the Person County Mega Park. This significant financial commitment along with the additional fifty thousand spent on a site survey and countless staff hours underscore, underscores the community's dedication to the success of the Person County Mega Park. The donut hole was also secured, further demonstrating our substantial investment in the project. In twenty twenty, the county secured the Army Corps permit for ten years, something that does not happen today. Getting the permit on the front end of a project would cut the usual time from twelve to eighteen months to secure a permit down to six. Speed to market is crucial for today. Any project that came to the Person County Mega Park would have to submit its site plan and they would have to modify the permit. The county had to provide a site plan to the Corps, the same conceptual plan that you've seen from twenty seventeen, which included the road closure and the structure to be in the middle of Country Club Road. Now, let me answer some questions and comments the county has received. If the road is closed, will it affect my tax value? In a letter received by Tax Administrator Russell Jones, it was stated that as long as the property remain, retains road access, the value would not be affected. Please note that many of the areas in question are larger agricultural and forestry tracts. Will a potential tenant in the Person County Mega Park affect my property value? Changes in value as indicated by market sales of properties in the areas are evaluated during the reappraisal schedule. According to the schedule, the next appraisal will be in twenty twenty-nine. Can you project the changes in property value? Many things affect property value without the knowledge of the industry that may be located on the Person County Mega Park. Will it affect public transportation? You have received a letter from the Person County Transportation Director Mitch Flag stating that there will be minimal effect and the software they use will adjust to the road closure. Will it affect school traffic? You will see there is a letter from Person County Schools and Bethel Hill Charter Schools showing there will be minimal effect to their buses or any student that rides the buses. They can make adjustments and will do so if this proposal goes through. There are thirteen hundred and fifty acres. Why does the road have to be closed? Per a letter received from Labella, a professional firm, one of the major permits needed for any project that goes on the Person County Mega Park is the Army Corps four oh four permit. Corps Engineers' section four oh four of the permit was approved on September fifteenth, twenty twenty. During the Corps of Engineers permitting process, they addressed issues to minimize the detrimental effects on the environment and investigate options for locating buildings. Although we were not involved in the process, in our opinion, the Corps permit, the optimal site to locate the size of the building pad for its industrial site. Relocating building sites from the ridge will call addition, will cause additional issues. Shifting the building pad to the east, south, or west interferes with additional stream channels. This would impact additional environmental issues and cause increased cost to mitigate and possible denial of the permit. Relocation of the building pad would cause additional cost for excavation and possible rock removal. The existing land contours on the site are steep and sloped away from the ridge. Preparing this large building pad in another location would be difficult and costly to the developer to construct additional access roads that would need to be designed as a maximum grade of five percent. Relocation of the building pad would potentially cause mitigation of the wetlands. The entire site is covered with wetland area. Any relocation would potentially increase the cost of the project. Time required to resubmit and evaluate the permit application would be controlled by the Corps. This could affect the timeline required by the developer. Can another road be built before the road closure? I'll turn to Labella's letter once again. Industrial developers select impossible sites typically require the ability to secure internal areas and maintain effective production flow within the site. Allowing existing road and right-of-way through the site causes issues with security and productivity concerns. The current location of Country Club Road would cause an issue with increased cost of the facility. One possible solution is to abandon a portion of the existing road and permanently divert traffic to another road within the area. DOT typically would evaluate issues such as trip distances from Country Club Road to existing roads within the area to determine new traffic patterns. Review the number of vehicles traveling this portion of Country Club Road each day to determine how many vehicles are affected. Based on data that was gathered by DOT, this would be accepted or denied. The option provides no additional cost to the site development. Option two, relocate Country Club Road outside the perimeter of a site. The option would provide necessarily, necessary security and maintain maximum productivity within the current footprint of the facility. However, relocation of Country Club Road is approximately four thousand linear foot at an estimate of the project cost within four point six to five million dollars because of the terrain, potential rock evaluation, additional environmental mitigation, and other unknown issues. The cost estimate is preliminary and would need to be adjusted after design. Conclusion. Based on the information provided, there would be a significant cost increase to develop the site for an industrial client except for option one. With the DOT permit, in addition, time associated and resubmitting permits could have a negative impact for immediate potential development. Closing this road will affect my drive time substantially. NC DOT classifies State Road thirteen thirty-three, Country Club Road, as a secondary road. In twenty twenty-two, an average of a thousand vehicles per day traveled this section of Country Club Road, which is two hundred and fifty vehicles less per day than any average secondary road in Person County. With relative few homes and businesses in the area, traffic With relative few homes and businesses in the area, traffic volume is due to vehicles crossing through the area into other parts of the county. If the proposed section of Country Club Road is abandoned, those vehicles will need to detour around the area across the county. Here are a few data points from the two thousand and twenty-two NC DOT traffic study. They are all near the Person County Megapark. The road selection section that was proposed closed has two landowners. With relatively few homes and businesses in the area, traffic volume is due to the vehicles crossing through the area into other parts of the county. If the proposed section of Country Club Road is abandoned, those vehicles will need to detour around the area to continue across the county. Next, I'll show you examples of detours and mileage. Person County Animal Services to South Boston, Virginia. Via Chubba Lake Road to Country Club Road to Edwin Robertson to Woodstale to Harmony to Paradise to Cluster Springs to Hugh Matthews. Drive times is thirty minutes, distance is twenty-two miles. Via Chubba Lake to Cavell Chubba Lake to Boston Road to Hugh Matthews Highway, twenty-eight minutes, twenty-three point two miles. Person County Animal Services to Hayco Lake. Chubba Lake Road to City Lake Road to Morton Pulliam to Somor Road, drive time eighteen minutes, distance thirteen point one. Country Club Convenience to Duke Energy Progress Mayo Plant. Via Chubba Lake Road to Country Club Road to Edwin Robertson to Boston, drive time twelve minutes, distance nine point two miles. Chubba Lake Road to Boston Road to Woodstale to Edwin Robertson to Boston Road, drive time fourteen minutes, ten point one miles. Via Chubba Lake Road to Boston Road, thirteen minutes drive time, distance nine point two miles. Country Club Convenience to Carolina Sun Rock Rock Quarry. Via Chubba Lake to Country Club Road to Edwin Robertson to Woodstale, drive time is nine minutes, distance six point six. Via Cavell Chubba Lake to Boston Road to Woodstale, drive time eleven minutes, distance seven point five miles. Cash Shore to Bethel Hill Charter School. Via Chubba Lake Road to Country Club to Edwin Robertson to Shiloh Church to Boston, drive time sixteen minutes, distance eleven point two miles. Via North Morgan to North Madison to Boston Road, drive time fourteen minutes, nine point four miles. Country Club Convenience to Dirk Duke Energy Roxborough Plant. Via Country Club Road to coun- via Chubba Lake Road to Country Club Road to Edwin Robertson to McGee's Mill to Shore Road, drive time sixteen minutes, distance ten miles. Via Chubba Lake to McGee's Mill to Dunaway to Roxborough Plant Road, thirteen minutes, dr- distance seven miles. Via Chubba Lake to McGee's Mill to Concord Cefo to Somor to the Roxborough Plant Road, sixteen mi- minutes, nine point six miles. Person County Animal Services to Bethel Hill Charter School. Chubba Lake to Country Club to Edwin Robertson to Boston to Bethel Hill School, fourteen minutes, nine point five miles. Chubba Lake to Cavell Chubba Lake to Boston, fourteen minutes drive time, nine point six miles. Chubba Lake to Ridge Road to Carver Drive to Madison Boulevard to Boston Road to Bethel Hill School Road, sixteen minutes, eleven miles. Intersection Edwin Robertson and Country Club Road to Food Line and North Madison Boulevard. Via Country Club Road to Chubba Lake to Ridge to Carver Drive is eleven minutes, six point nine miles. Via Country Club Road to Cavell Chubba Lake Road to North Main Street to North Madison, drive time twelve minutes, distance six point seven. Via Edwin Robertson to Woodstale to Boston to Main to Madison, thirteen minutes, eight miles. Food Line and North Madison to the intersection of Edwin Robertson and Oak Grove. Via Carver Drive to Ridge to Chubba Lake to Country Club to Edwin Robertson, twelve minutes, eight point three miles. North Madison to North Main Street to Boston Road. To Woodstale to Edwin Robertson Road, drive time fifteen minutes, distance nine point four miles. Sheets to the corner of Edwin Robertson Road. Current mileage is six point nine miles, detour mileage is eight point one, the difference is one point two miles. The portion of Country Club Road is heavily traveled, is one of the questions we received. The DOT traffic study kicks in at three thousand trips generated. How will my emergency numbers be affected? There are plans to put an EMS station in the county's northern portion. This already is in a in the CIP request. Emergency management recognizes that before this is this possible road closure, the response times in the northern part of the county were not where they needed it to be. Impacts to Emergency Medical Services Fire Response. I'd like to note that the fire ratings from April of two thousand and twenty-one, the fire districts, sorry, the fire districts from April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one will not change. And Cefo Fire Department has been designated as the primary responder for the portion of Country Club Road that is under consideration for the abandonment. This road section covers approximately thirty-eight feet from sixteen fifty to twenty-three fifty, Country Club Road, where it intersects with Edwin Robertson Road. This area in question falls within Cefo's Response Zone Two, which has specific response plans for emergencies. If this segment of Country Club Road is abandoned, emergency vehicles coming from the north and east, Triple Springs and Cluster Springs, would have to detour of approximately three point five miles to reach homes just south of the closure. Response plans can be adjusted to account for the detour and modify the order of response accordingly. What about my business? If Person County were to land a project in the per- on the Person County Megapark, there would be a huge uptick in businesses in the area. When a project is announced anywhere, the employment numbers are announced too. People miss out on the construction employment numbers and the ripple effect it has on the county and businesses in the area. Last year, I spoke with a Polywood representative and they noted Mill Creek Store and Grill is the closest restaurant to their facility, which is where a lot of employees go. Look at the recent upgrades to Mill Creek Store and the parking lot. Can you tell us more information about projects and why they are so confidential? One of the most important aspects of economic development is confidentiality. Business is competitive and knowledge of your competition plans make an uneven playing field. There are times when a leak in the project has been reasons a community has lost a project. There are also NDAs usually involved. Sometimes an economic developer does not know the investment, footprint, employees, or company until an announcement is made. It is not that I do not want to tell you or the public what the prospects are. It's I can't, or I might not even know. Trust me, it would be a lot easier for me to share that information with you than having to answer and filter questions that I can't. There were, there was a great article published on confidentiality and the cost of losing it. John Nams with Duke Energy wrote the article for the Triangle Business Journal. The article explains how a breach in confidentiality costs a project. That is the February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two issue. He ends the article with the World War Two quote, loose lips sink ships. Person County has taken some ri- recent hits on its tax base. GKN will be closing at the end of the year. Yes, the building will remain, however, the taxes on equipment valued at thirty-seven million will be removed. The taxes on equipment will equate to a loss of the county of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighteen thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars for fire tax. Capital Power, although not as recent, had a loss in tax revenue for the city of Roxborough and Person County. On September thirteenth, I spoke with Brooks Lockhart, City Manager for Roxborough. He went back and looked at the numbers presented to the council in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two and noted seventeen point seven percent decline in sales or volume following the closure of Capital Power in two thousand and twenty-one. Wait it, rate increases were required to maintain the viability of the system after the closure of Capital Power. Our water system serves residents, commercial operations and industrial operations in the area spanning between Timberlake and the Mayo Plant. Any substantial increase in water sales is an economic boom for existing water customers. Increased sales allow the system to resist rate increases and if sizable enough, can result in rate reductions for existing businesses and residents. What happens if the road is closed and the project does not land on the Person County Megapark? Can that decision be reversed? The county can go through a similar process to have the road reopened. If this road is closed, it will be a challenge for a while. However, the challenge is necessary for progress. The closure will pave the way for economic development, which is not solely about attracting new businesses, but also about generating tax revenue for needed growth. The closure can be a stepping stone to address our county's needs. I'd like to turn your attention to type of economic impacts. The economic impacts of an institution operation can be broke down in three categories: direct, indirect, and induced effects. Let's use a local example, Spentec. Their direct effect, their first round of spending, is company to market. For example, their production of baby wipes. The indirect is an economic level. It will be the utilities, for example, the city of Roxborough, Duke, and Dominion. It can be logistics, transportation, raw material. Induced economic impact is on a community level. Property values go up, wages go up, schools get more funding, roads get more funding, and county services, of course, could go up. Here's some recent announcements in North Carolina, just to give you a few examples of indirect and induced results. Johnston County announced a food manufacturing facility, which is thirty-five point seven million dollar investment with two hundred jobs. Indirect job creation is a hundred and eighty-one, induced is a hundred and two, so total job creation is forty-three. Richmond County Portable Buildings had a seven point four million dollar investment, fifty-one jobs. The indirect job creation is five, induced is fourteen, for a total of sixty-nine. In Edgecombe, an industry is a battery manufacturing. It had one point four billion investment, a thousand jobs. Indirect job creation, a hundred and three, induced job creation, three hundred and fifty-nine, total job creation, fourteen sixty-two. The key takeaway from this is the ripple effect on the benefits for the entire county. Investments in a community results in an increase in jobs in a wide range of industries. Even in investments that produce low employment, tax revenue improves county services. What happens if the road is closed? Before you, you'll see an example of a road closure plan by Labella. This is just an example to show you. A turnaround must be constructed for large vehicles, for example, a transfer truck, school buses. There has to be proper signage. There has to be proper signage before you get to the road closure. All of this is done by DOT regulations. If the Person County Board of Commissioners votes to close the road last night, to close the road, it will be in their discretion when it will be closed. At such date, that will be closed to DOT standards. Then, if the property is sold, it will then become the owner's responsibility to provide the DOT with a final plan for the road closure designed. A couple things that I'd like to close with. Agriculture is vital to our county, and we must ensure it thrives. Responsible growth, it is possible without sacrificing our agricultural heritage. The Person County Megapark's success is thanks to the contributions of former economic development directors, commissioners, and county staff. It is now your turn to take the ball over the goal line. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. I believe that this information will help you and your constituents better understand the request. As the Economic Development Director of Person County, I will always strive to make decisions that benefit our county, a place my family and I call home.
Any questions on Director Lynch?
Commissioner Powell, I have one. Brandy, on the looking at the road closure and the turnaround?
Yes.
And looking at this circle that we would have to be, be done turnaround circle. Is that turnaround circle, would that be on the people who own land before they get to the road closure? Or would that be on the property of the company that is possibly purchasing the land?
It would be on the property of the landowners.
Landowners? Do we know how much that would, how about how much footage that would be, square footage it would be of to do that?
Um, I got this plan yesterday at two o'clock. So it is out to contractors right now to give me estimates on need size with the information they have from Labella and the road. So I cannot tell you an exact footage right now. I just don't have it. I hopefully will have it in the coming days, but I I don't have that at this point.
I think, you know, if I was on land there, I'd be a little bit worried about how much that was going to be coming into, how much land I would be losing on that turnaround, so.
The the Wagstaff family, it, uh, you may have misunderstood me. It would be on, the turnaround would be on their property.
On their property, it would be on the landowners that people.
No, it will be on the current Megapark landowners' property.
That was my question I wanted to make.
If you'll, the slide that had the road closure on there, the road closure would be after the final two homes. It on that road. There is no other homes from there to the stop sign. It will be on nobody's property except the Person County Megapark.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Sorry.
Thank you for.
You're welcome.
All right.
Anybody else? Very good. I hope people have taken advantage of what you have done and what you've posted because you mentioned the confidentiality issue and that's hard to take. It's, um, but it's business and they, the client, all the clients that we've dealt with are pretty much on the same page. They want to talk about it because, they don't want to talk about it because that's their business and they pretty much don't want anybody else knowing what they're doing. Could be a small project in Person County that grand will hurt about or casual hurt about. So they undercut and get in the process of trying to get what's presented to Person County someplace else. So the confidentiality, i- it's important. It's hard, hard for us as board members and staff not to. It's not, as you said, not that you don't want to tell the project or even projects mentioned depend on it. And I've been involved with everyone since Trace, and they all said the same thing. So there, there's nothing different here. But we've gotten further down the road with this project than than any other during those eight years that you've talked about. And so we've had to abide by the same rules with those. They just didn't materialize or advance to the point that we are today. So that's, uh, that's important. But thank you again for your research, time spent. And again, I I hope people have taken advantage of what, um, what's on the website. Because again, trying to provide the information and transparency to the extent that we can, and that's limited, uh, in this case in particular.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions already.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Brandy, there's been multiple projects that have inquired about the mega site. Brandy, there's been multiple projects that have inquired about the mega site. Out of the projects that you have worked with in the past that you know about, how many of those, is this, how many of those projects have inquired about purchasing the entire site itself?
That I've worked with? The intentions of every project that has come since I've been the director has not been initially to purchase the entire site. Nobody wants a 350-acre site anymore. That's not what anybody is looking for. The, the economic development world has significantly changed, and we have the option, our county's option was to purchase the entire Mega Park, or we could ask that we only purchase a portion of it, and that has never came to fruition. It's always been a pretty much all or nothing, because most projects want this particular area where the Army Corps is, and that would be like plucking out the best part of your property and then giving you back wetlands that you can't use, and what businessman or landowner would do that? The amount of wetlands and streams that are on this property is unbelievable. The topography to clear and grade is millions upon millions upon millions.
In past projects that have been potential candidates of being here, have there been talks of a, working with them to have a secondary road through there on the, on the unused mega site portion?
I have never had a project inquire about that, or even mention that because of the low number, uh, traffic numbers on that road. It has been mentioned to, to several projects, at every project that I've worked with, that if they will leave that portion intact, or a certain portion of it intact, it would allow for emergency vehicles to be able to get around it better. That's something that the Emergency Management Director has always ingrained in me to tell a project, so that has al- always been relayed to them, that if they would leave an access for emergency vehicles to get through, it, it would significantly help them.
Oh, I wasn't talking about the, I was talking about the alternate route.
But no, 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 not an alternate route.
Okay. And, but, well, you had mentioned some figures about an alternate route and, you know, the, the challenges with that. Would the, I guess what I'm saying is, would the, would it be, if the only feasible way it would, to, if we approached the prospect, it would have to go?
Yes.
Through?
The only way to get another road, talking to DOT, talking to La Bella, the only alternative to get another road is to go through the Mega Park. The topography where you would have to put it is extreme, as La Bella said. The cost, they can't even give me, that's their best guess, because as they reminded me, this is Roxborough, and there's a lot of rock, and they can't predict that. That cost would be turned to the county or the project. Also, it's very, very important to mention, there's two easements going through that property from Duke, so not only would you have to work with the project, you would have to work with Duke to get an easement of their property, and that I, I do not know that they would consider. But I think the cost factor would be significant to build another road.
But as it stands right now, NC DOT has abandoned the road. The county is purely responsible for maintaining that portion of the road, as is right now.
As of right now, the DOT has only abandoned maintenance. For example, if a pothole's form, they will not do anything to upgrade, fix, maintain, anything to the road. It is solely on the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brandy?
Sir?
Couple of comments. If we could go around this park or development site, you looking at that 100-foot variance of drop-off?
Yes.
Plus the wetlands?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it would be a tremendous, tremendous amount of money and effort. It probably would be 90% bridge.
If you look at the outside of the two parcels that are connected by Country Club Road, that out portion of both of them is wetlands. Um, especially to the left is, if you're going down Country Club Road, it's significant wetlands. And by the time you maybe thought about getting another road in there, you would be so close to Woodstall Road, or down the road to McGee's Mill, it, it would just be, don't know that it would be possible.
Just verifying that.
Yeah.
But holding it wraps, something that would understandably need to be talked about with the project, possibly. I mean, if you want to talk about it, fine.
Yes, you can, I, you can ask a project anything. It doesn't mean that they?
Yeah, but I think at this point, I don't know that personally that is something we needed to do, but certainly an option.
Another way to think of it is, if you put another, a road in there, you'll lose the buffer. You could lose some buffer, so that's something to consider as well. I know people of the county like their privacy, and if you, that will take away some buffer.
Brandy, I know it's been asked to be, road closure, and the possibility of that road staying open until they break ground, and I know that would be something that would have to be asked, I guess, of the, of the company that's coming in, but I know that that, you close it, you know, and how long will it be before they start? We don't know. And then there's probably some other liabilities with that.
Yes.
But that certainly is, is something that, you know, if, if we could do that, that would be nice, because again, eventually it's going to close, we know that, but, you know, keeping it open as long as we could would be, I'm sure, nice for the people who live in that area, so.
As I said in my presentation, the closure date will be at the commissioner's discretion if you so choose to close the road. However, if the project lands and the property is sold, it will then become part of those parcels, the land, and it will no longer be the county's responsibility to, to maintain or even provide road closure, uh, equipment. The, the, the project would then have to take over that at that time.
Mr. Attorney?
And if I could, Mr. Sims, on that point, just so the board is clear, you're being asked whether to close the road this evening or not. You can vote tonight, order be effective. What Ms. Lynch has suggested is, you could at a date in the future have the actual closure become effective, and what happens when that occurs is title to the actual road right-of-way conveys to property owners on either side of the road. So as Ms. Lynch just said, it's, it's not only not a road right-of-way anymore, now it's private property, so that'd be something for the board to consider.
Is that something that could be covered by this order of closing?
Yes, sir. Not to jump the gun, but in the board's deliberation, we've got a proposed order for the board to consider. If you look under Section 2, there's the operative language where if you all said, "We want to give it a week or two weeks from this date," and you, this is after you determine the closure is appropriate, of course, you could put the date in there, so that's why that blank is there.
So we can do that in a separate motion?
That can be done at a later date, correct?
Yes, sir. So what I'd suggest is, you have a public hearing tonight, close the hearing, then you have your deliberation. You've got to make some findings this evening. You have to find that, and since we're, we're having this discussion, you have to find that closing the road would not be contrary to the public interest, and you also have to find that no individual owning property in the vicinity of the road would be deprived of reasonable means of ingress or egress, you know, in and out of their property. If you make those two findings, then you can close it, but you can set the date, or you can adopt the order tonight, excuse me, you can set the date for closure to be effective at some point in the future. And I would just say one last thing, this, Mr. Sims and Mr. Pury here, if that is an option the board wishes to consider, staff's happy to provide you some thinking about possible dates in the future that'd be appropriate.
Okay. Anything else from Ms. Lynch? About it?
I do want to add one more comment here. Several weeks ago, I sent you all the code that pertains to confidentiality. If I were to know what was going there, and I disclosed that, and I was caught rear-handed, I would face a felony fine with the possibility of imprisonment up to a couple of years because of the big perjury. So glad I don't know what's going on there, because I don't want to know until it happens, because I don't want to slip up if I had have known and accidentally spilled beans. But I don't want to go to jail. I've not been to jail, not a federal jail.
Don't look good in orange, huh? Okay, I guess maybe you can sit down this time. We might call you back, though.
No problem. I'm here all night, no problem.
Appreciate it very much. Very good job. So in, in this hearing, at this point, then, we're to the point of public comment in favor of or in opposition to this road closure. Madam Clerk, do we have speaker signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have a total of 13 people. We have two signed up in favor of, with the other 11 in opposition.
Okay, so if we're all in agreement, we'll, we'll do three, three minutes per person. Okay, we'll notify IT at the clock, and so, as you're speaking, just be cognizant of the fact that someone else is standing in line right behind you, and give them the opportunity of speaking as well.
All right, yes, sir. So the first speaker in office, excuse me, we're doing favor of first, so Brandon Fox would be the first speaker.
If I can say something before my time starts, the two people speaking tonight, the first two people are me and my dad. He's in opposition, I'm in favor. There's no family feud going on here. We're on the same team, we're just taking different approaches, okay? I just want to make that clear, that we're, we're all on the same team. Commissioners, I am in agreement with closing Country Club Road, just as I am in agreement for the Mariah Energy Center. I don't think anyone in this room hates the thought of bettering Person County with industry, jobs, and a better tax base. It is the approach that matters. It is unfortunate that my family's 170-year-old farm will be directly surrounded on three sides by an industrial complex, but I understand that you have to put the development somewhere. That part is what it is. I'm not one to infringe on others' property rights. I speak for many people in this room when I have doubts that the mega site development will come to fruition. There are too many obstacles in its path that were mentioned by Brandy Lynch, and the road is only one small piece. It's not for lack of trying on the county's part, you all have done well. It has just been passed over time and time again for more favorable sites. A needed minimum workforce of a million, 100-foot drop in topography, wetlands, distance to rail lines, no interstate, less than 1,000 contiguous acres are all reasons that our citizens have their doubts. This makes closing a road that so many people utilize seem unnecessary. We are concerned that the road will be closed so that the mega site property will look more appealing to buyers, but otherwise have no real effect, as it is far from the only barrier to a successful closure of a deal. What I'm asking for is a very small concession in the grand scheme of a project like this. I ask that if the road must be closed, that it be legally closed on paper and presented to potential buyers as such, but still allowing through traffic until a buyer closes on the property and is ready to break ground. This prevents an undue hardship to all of the citizens here tonight, but it also allows time for a prospect search if the current prospect backs out with no negative impacts to anyone. Commissioner Powell mentioned at the last commissioners' meeting that if this most current project did not go through, we could always reopen the road. It seems to me that it would be much easier to have a signed approval on paper for an approved road closure, but not to physically block the road until it is necessary to do so, preventing going back and forth on whether the road is closed or open. I also ask that it be a part of the contract that in the site plan and access is constructed between Edwin Robertson Road and Country Club Road, and that local traffic is allowed to use it. Every industrial complex that I can think of would want access to both roads for ease of shipping and employees coming to and from work. It is a safe bet that whoever does their grading and parking lot will be paving a private road between the two. All I'm asking is that you ask them not to put security stops on both ends, but instead ask them to model it such as Duke Regional Hospital, which allows for 10 mile-per-hour traffic around the entire complex, but you must make a left or right turn off of the main road to get to secured areas. This will not affect the security of their site at all, it just allows low speed through traffic for local citizens. These two ideas that I have presented fix almost all of the problems that have been presented with the mega site. The citizens in the area are doubtful but hopeful for a brighter future in Person County. We challenge you to find a buyer that is willing to be a good neighbor, and one that is willing to make small steps to accommodate their neighbors. I would hope that, as commissioners, you are reaching out to potential clients that are friendly to our county, our environment, and to their neighborhood and community, and not just our yearly tax income. Because to be frank, if they aren't good stewards of our land and way of life, Person County doesn't want them. Making a couple of small concessions, such as the ones I've asked for, will go a long way in earning the trust and votes of your citizens. The consensus in closing arguments at the last commissioners' meeting is that you can't make everybody happy. While that may be true, you can do your part to soften the blow and advocate for us, and that goes a long way in garnering our support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The next speaker we had is Taki Majors.
Commissioners, good evening. All right. I stand up here tonight in a, in a neutral position, as I'm coming tonight, I come as the Fire Chief for Sepho Voluntary Fire Department, representing my department and those that we serve in the community, and mutual aid to Triple Springs and north part of Roxborough's fire, extended fire district. The closing of Country Club Road is going to delay response times to emergencies to that area, that, you know, that live in that specific area of Edwin Robertson Road, as well as delaying response times provided mutual aid to our neighboring districts. Currently, our fastest route to mutual aid departments in case of emergency in that area is McGee's Mill Road to Country Club Road to Edwin Robertson Road, that is leaving our main station, located at 1291 Concord Sepho Road. Closing this road is going to cause our response times to increase from up to a minute and a half to a little bit over two minutes, and those times come from two alternative routes, you know, which would be Oak Grove Route or McGee's Mill to Edwin Robertson. Also, adding some distance to that, a point four, point four miles up to a mile and a half, and adding more acceleration and deceleration points, which increases response times. This doesn't sound like much, but in the world of emergency services, this is a lot. Closing of this road also affects mutual aid, you know, EMS, Roxborough Fire Department, Triple Springs Fire Department, Person County Rescue, Fire Marshal, EM, Cluster Springs Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, responder to Sepho. In reference to NFPA 1720 for voluntary departments, departments must assemble 10 firefighters within 10 minutes of the time of dispatch. Meeting these requirements is already difficult enough. Closing the road will only make it even more difficult to meet the standard. So any resident or those that are traveling on Edwin Robertson Road would be extremely affected by the delaying response from emergency services, for emergency services. Anyone living north of Edwin Robertson Road would also be heavily impacted by the effect of closing the road. I ask that you all consider alternative four roads in that area, as has been shown and considered in original plans that were floating around years ago. We have had some pretty significant events take place on Edwin Robertson Road and areas north of Edwin Robertson Road. Events from cardiac arrest, traumatic injuries, motor vehicle accidents, needing educational responses, fatalities, and structural fires, just to name a few. Delaying care to those in need is causing Delaying care to those in need is causing concern. As a community stakeholder that provides emergency services, we would like to be involved in a needs assessment for community growth and location of industry within our district. With concerns of providing adequate emergency services, we may have to consider in the future building a third station and adding staffing in that area for us to provide a fair service to those that work in, in the mega site, um, or in the area of the mega site, and those that reside on Edwin Robertson Road and in the Woodsdale area, and also the northern area of Roxborough. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was in favor of. The next set of speakers is going to be in opposition of. The first speaker on that list is Todd Fox.
Hello.
Good evening.
I live at eighteen-seventy Edwin Robertson Road, which is at the intersection of Country Club Road and Edwin Robertson Road. Basically, I am the bullseye in this photo. So I am probably the one that's going to be the farthest away from anything, okay? So with that being said, uh, removing the road for the site is not necessary because the property is so large, it would be suitable for many large industrial sites. The figures I have here are based off of Person County's own GIS figures. An example, the largest industrial, industrial facility in Person County right now is Louisiana Pacific, and they're on two-hundred-and-thirty-eight acres of land. The largest land use in Person County now is the Raleigh Regional Airport, which is three-hundred-and-ninety-four acres of land. To give you an example of how big this mega site is, if you added up Louisiana Pacific, Person County Industrial Center on five-oh-one, Polywood, GKN, Eden Corporation, Raleigh Regional Airport, Person Senior High School, Raleigh, I mean Roxborough Community School, North and South Elementary School, Northern and Southern Middle School, Piedmont Community College, the Sportsplex, and you're only using twelve-hundred-and-thirty-two acres. You still have a hundred-and-eighteen acres left over. So you could put all of those facilities on the mega site. So another example is from the surrounding state and counties. The Goodyear Tire Plant in Danville, Virginia is seven-hundred-and-ten acres, and they are the largest tire manufacturing facility in North America, and they employ twenty-one-hundred people, and they own seven-hundred-and-ten acres. I realize that all the land is not suitable to build on because of streams and low-lined lands, but clearly there is no shortage of land to build on, on the mega site. Even by your own Person County economic development numbers, there are estimated nine-hundred-and-forty-eight buildable acres on that site. If a new industrial facility is to be built where the road is, a road around the new facility would be the least disruptive. I measured from my home at eighteen-seventy Edwin Robertson Road to a central location being the courthouse, and it's six-point-one miles. If I have to go Woodsdale Road, it would add three-point-one miles if, to my commute each way. If I go Oak Grove Road, it would add four-point-three miles to my commute. Eliminating that seven-tenths of a mile road you are considering will be a big inconvenience for all who travel that road. I don't know what size facility the county hopes to land for this site, but it seems to me that there is more than enough land for any industrial site you may need. Eliminating the road does not, does not make any sense to me or other Person County residents. If a site is to be built, the more roads coming in and out of that facility, you will reduce congestion and accidents. I've been told, I'm running out of time, the simplest solution would be to have a plan in place before the facility is built to reroute any section of that road. The, I know the decision has probably been made by the commissioners before this meeting even took place today. I know that the citizens of Person County have put our faith in this board to make the right decision. I also realize the county commissioners have a responsibility to the people living in Person County and for the advancement of this county. I am not against the mega site, as this county needs jobs. This new mega site has a lot of unknowns attached to it. We, as citizens of Person County, pray that this decision that you make is based on extensive research and will vote the best interest for all of Person County and its citizens. Thank you for the job that you do and for listening to all the concerns of Person County.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Kent Watson.
Yes, I live on Charlotte J. Road. I'm sure y'all know where that's at. Keep hearing it's the best interest of the people on the paper, on the news, but has not been nobody out there to talk to nobody in this neighborhood about what is going on. And like today, I travel to Virginia several times a week. So I measured off my ultimate route to Virginia today with the road being closed. And I used to come out on Charlotte J., uh, Shallow Church Road, the five-oh-one. Thirteen-point-six miles, lived in a half minutes, and I could be in South Boston, Virginia at that time. So that is my shortcut to five-oh-one. And far as the traffic do there, it is steadily every day with dump trucks and everything else. So that is my concern about cutting it down because it's going to put me going way out of the way. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Tina Clayton. All right, thank you, ma'am. The next speaker we have then is Margie Pittman.
Hi, I'm Margie Pittman, and I live on Edwin Robertson Road, and I'm against it because of the emergency part of it, the ambulance and, and the, you know, the sheriff's department or if I needed them. I had a stroke back in January of twenty-three, and they said I went straight to Durham Regional, and they said if I had been fifteen minutes later, I would not have made it. And if someone had had to go around, you know, the long way to get to me, then I probably wouldn't be here tonight. So I'm not against, you know, progress or anything like that, but, you know, it's just a fact, and so that's why I'm, you know, against it because of the emergency part of it. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Sonia Vaughn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Sonia Vaughn, and I am a lifelong resident of Person County and the Chub Lake area. I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to share my concerns and the concerns of some of our community members with the board. The purpose of a public hearing, per my understanding and Google, is to gather public input on a proposed action or policy before a decision is made. Public hearings are a formal process that allow the public to share their thoughts on a matter of public concern. And I thought this was very key. When done well, public hearings help build a feeling of community. When not done well, unrest exists. There are many concerns regarding the proposal to close a portion of Country Club Road. In speaking with other members of the community, the consensus is that it feels like the board has already made their decision. Comments have been from, um, from statements made in the local newspaper to statements made at the most recent board meetings, that it feels like to us, we wanted to know, was this meeting even necessary? Or is it just to appease us, to give us a chance to say what's on our minds? Closing of that road affects more than just people. It affects individuals and businesses. And I say businesses because there are more businesses that use that road other than to access places like Mayo and Hiko. There are a number of trucking, logging, hauling, and transportation companies that use this road daily, and they are going to locations other than Mayo or Hiko. And my heart goes out to the Fox family. They clearly are the ones who will be the most affected by this. Several weeks ago, I polled some of the commissioners, and one of my first questions was, will another access road be built? And the answers I received were all over the place. Here are a few comments that I wrote down from either my phone conversations or messages with various members of the board. Yes, possibly even before the road closes, plans are in the works for a new cut-through route to Edwin Robertson. Plans are already drawn up from previous projects. The, they will petition the DOT to pursue a cut-through road. More than likely, the new road will be complete before the road closure. The plant would have to be in operation for the closure to happen. County would either have to buy the land to build another road, or the DOT would have to acquire the property to build a new road. So then, when I spoke with a EDC director in an email, I was told that there would be no access road. So I would have expected six mirroring answers to that question of, is there going to be a road closure or an access road? And instead, you heard what I got. From this meeting tonight, it sounds to me like we're about ten years too late having this meeting. If it was proposed and submitted ten years ago, why didn't we do this then? And if the county's submission included this road closure, um, that just makes no sense to me. And from hearing the topography issues, the wetlands issues, maybe that land just isn't suitable. Have we even taken that into consideration? So thank you for your time, and it is my hope that your opinions aren't made before you leave this room tonight and hear the others, what they have to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Chris Godley.
Good evening, everybody. I'm actually here because I'm Jimmy Bozey's stepson. He asked me to speak on his behalf tonight, as he would have trouble getting up here and talking. As a lot of people know, he and his family have lived off of Edwin Robertson Road since dirt was invented. A lot of the conversation tonight has been specifically about the mega park. But this meeting is specifically geared towards the closure of a road. And when boiled down to its base sum, the question is, are we wanting to close a road that while numbers-wise, a thousand vehicles a day may not seem like much to the people on that end of the county who use it every single day, it's an important thoroughfare? And to propose to close that road solely so that the property owners, the Wagstaff family, have a better chance of selling that property is akin to a slap in the face to all of those who will be affected by it, but at the same time have no say. This is our only say. The mega site itself, the only two elements that make the mega site a proper mega site is the quantity of land and its location on a power line. The rest of the property is wetlands and hills and everything else. Simply saying that the main only flat spot is on the road should tell you exactly what you need to know about its viability as a project. I've worked in construction my entire life. That project is doomed from the very beginning. Every developer who sees it and sees the quantity of viable land off the top will look at it and look at the expenditure that they have to make and go, I'm not sure I really wanted to get into this. Sure, eventually a developer may come along, but how long is this road going to be closed while they decide whether they want to purchase the property? It could be years, it could be never. But as with most government projects or most government decisions, once you give something away, it's ten times harder to get it back. So the statement that we may be able to approach reopening the road later on if all of this falls through, sure. But if that's the case, why close it? I, I don't really have anything else to say, so I appreciate your time, and I appreciate everyone here's time. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
With the council's permission, this lady that gave up her time, I, I didn't get to get on the list, is that possible? I was, I was here right at the very beginning.
All right, we'll, we'll allow that.
My name is Ryan Scheidel. I'm a preacher out of McGee's Mill Baptist Church. This is my pastor. In regards to emergency, I'm sorry.
Name again?
Ryan Scheidel. I preached at the jail here in Roxborough, well, I did till they had a drug problem. But, uh, so this is my pastor. I drive a church bus, and I got a lot of elderly people to ride the bus with me, and there's an emergency, almost probably yearly, we have some kind of thing that goes on, and that's my route to get there as fast as I can, you know? And sometimes I even have to take them back in contingency, different things, you know, like that. So that means a lot to me. But with all that, I was thinking, I was looking on the website, with the disclosure, non-disclosure, um, as far as jobs go, I, I, I deal with the community a lot, and there's not a whole lot of working people wanting to work anymore. So that means a lot of the people that's going to be coming to work here are going to be from out of town. And I would say if you travel five-oh-one any amount of time, you know that a lot of our traffic's coming from out of town. That being said, as far as creating jobs, it'd be great, but who's going to do the work? But then I was looking on the website and it's talking about life sciences and bio, pharmaceuticals, possibilities, car manufact-, or parts manufacturing, different things like that. That also creates a lot of pollution. And my concern is, if you have, any of you have been here living in Person County in amount of time, our cancer rate is through the roof. And I'm not just trying to, you know, just harp on, like Mayo and Hiko, we need power, but at the same time, we've seen a lot of things go on in our community. And we've got some other areas of our community we need help in. And I didn't come here to preach that, I just, you know, throwing that out there, it's concerns. When you talk about development and projects that could be possibly there, you know, we don't, like you said, you don't even know what's going there, right? So there's some concern there, and then to shut a road down just for that, that's detrimental to the community. I, I'm, I'm in opposition. That's my stance, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, the next speaker we have is Jeff Watkins.
Hey, y'all. Thank you for that presentation before I get started. It answered a lot of questions. I do have a question, though. LaBella, what exactly are they responsible for as far as consulting? Is it just site development, or is it companies or?
They're, they're an engineering firm. Yeah, and for site development now, I'm not, yeah. Come on, man, Brandy. You've dealt with them more than anybody else in the room.
So they have multiple reaches. Yes, they're an engineering firm, but one of the notable things is they're the ones that designed the water line to the mega park. But they are engineers, they do planning, they have a very, very broad reach, geotech, et cetera.
Well, I share in pretty much everybody's concerns is, with the road being closed, it's going to make more of a, more travel for us. My mother-in-law comes to our house several times a week to keep our kids, and that's just going to have, she's going to have to go around now. But I've had a problem with this from the beginning because it seems like we just keep throwing money at stuff. And so I got, I could be wrong in some of this, but water line was like one-point-six million approximately, another two million on something, fifty thousand site surveyed, three-fifty on, on the land in the middle. Is five million, safe to say, we've spent on this so far? Something like that, tax dollars?
I've not heard that number, I've heard.
I mean, round, roundabout number? Five million, something like that? Possibly? All right, we'll, we'll say four, three, whatever. But to build a new road, four-point-six to five million? Build, build a rail extension if somebody bought it? I just see a lot of tax dollars getting wasted. And I have a fire hydrant in front of my driveway with a trash bag over it, show for it. I mean, it's no water, there's a fiber line, right? I mean, it's no water, there's a fiber line, right? Somebody ran fiber? I don't know that anybody's hooked up to that. But the, uh, when I heard Labella, I was like, okay, well, so we're having an outside company consult for us. And I just looked at it, just went to their, you know, about us, whatever. And right there in, in bold, "A holistic approach to diversity, equity, and inclusion." And if they're consulting the county on how to build this thing, they're going to be consulting on which company comes in here and, and this is what we're going to get. A bunch of rainbow pride stuff in this county from a company that comes in here based off of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And yeah, it might provide jobs, but is a white male going to get a job? And then, and then we're told it's all in the best interest of, of the people of the county. I, no, sorry, I, I have nothing personally in it, I just don't trust government, but I just, I especially don't trust the government when they tell me it's in your best interest that we do something. Especially when nobody's talked to me. I got people trespassing on my property doing surveys, tax dollars getting wasted, and now they want to close my road. It's, it rubs me the wrong way. So, I'm sure everybody else goes that way too, so.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Donna Donovan.
No, I'm not speaking.
All right, the next speaker we have is Kristi McKay.
Um, honestly, I will not take much time because of going over. But just real quick, the only one, Oak Grove Road. And the main reason I came here was just to kind of see how the board of commissioners was going. Moved here 24 years ago. And the reason I moved out of that area is because it was rural conservation. And now, a large portion of it's going to be general industrial. And the general industrial is sitting on top of a lot of environmental wetlands, which is something I'm really concerned of. I'm an engineer by trade. And so, obviously, I have nothing to say about that. But the only thing about the road closure that I have a question about that was not addressed during this talk is you're talking about the thousand cars per day. And as somebody mentioned, that's probably all of us that live there driving to work, right? There's very unpopulated area out there. But what we haven't mentioned is put this mega park in not knowing what it's going to be, but how much is the traffic coming in going to be increased? I mean, look at Country Club Road right now, it's still, we'll be coming through that, coming through the school section. And is there any funds or planning set aside for increasing the new traffic that's going to be coming in down all the different access areas coming up Oak Grove Road? What are we going to do about that? If this is going to employ 2,000 people, how are they going to get there? So, that's just another thought that wasn't addressed during this talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Ken Denon.
Denise, that's good, I'll pass. She actually raised some of the points I was going to raise, so that's fine.
All right, thank you, sir. The last speaker we have is Dale Snow.
No, we just thought we were staging an opposite.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that does conclude our speaking portion of the public hearing.
Okay.
We do have one person who is asking to speak.
Okay, who is it?
I just, I work for Goldman Sachs and they're probably, and my job was to flip projects.
Name again, sir?
Timmy Dunn.
Okay, thank you.
And I worked for them for 35 years. And the thing that is, if you've got wetland in it, they're going to run from it. But the biggest thing I wanted to ask, who, who profits the most for this to happen? Does anybody know? Not the people, but who? Who, why so, why they gotta do it so fast and purchase all the land? When you said it's wetland, why, nobody's going to build it. No project Goldman Sachs would be within two miles of wetland because the first time you have runoff or you have something, you're tied up. But the biggest thing I, I still want to know who profits the most from this happening? Anybody know? Is it the landlord? Does anybody? Nobody knows?
County.
The county profits most? So, the guy that's selling it, we're not acting as a realist for him, pretty much, no, don't think so. Okay, I feel the difference, but because we're having to purchase 1,300 and you're, you're saying that some of it's wetland and some of it's this that you can't use.
Really, I'm not supposed to talk right now? I just wanted to.
No, no, that's, but I, I, I just wonder who is, who stands to gain the most from this? The people personally, I don't know somebody that is selling. That's all I got to say. Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. That's all, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So do.
We have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. Any comments? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no motion hearing. Next on the agenda here then would be consideration to grant or deny approval to close a portion of State Route 1333 of Country Club Road. Now, we've got a couple of different possibilities here that we might want to consider. And one, one would be what we mentioned earlier about an effective date. Is that, is it proper, did we do that one first?
Um, Mr. Chairman, you can do it in whichever way you all want.
Doesn't matter.
What I might recommend is the board have a discussion about public interest and whether egress and ingress has been denied to anyone. If the board is satisfied, then it'd be appropriate to talk about that date.
Okay, floor is open for discussion about egress and ingress. Anybody got concerns, thoughts, comments? I think that's already been addressed.
I've, I've got a lot of thoughts from, different from the public getting up and telling, telling us their concerns. And there was a lot of questions that people asked of us today. A lot of people on the assumption that we already said done deal, we've already had our mind made up. I did make a comment, I still say that, you know, the concern is that whether we close this road or not, if it's closed, it's probably a good bet that we will probably not land this project. And if it's, if it's, if it's not closed and we leave it, we leave it, we leave it open. And, you know, and my concern is just some of the people, what you mentioned today, you know, I don't, I don't know how many jobs, how many jobs it's going to be, I don't know. You mentioned about, well, how much land does it take for that plant to be built? I don't know that. But we're, we do know that we have a company that's interested in this land. And I know one of the, some of the people have reached out to me, they said, "Well, I hope it's not going to be a hazardous dump." You know, that's people's concern, what's it going to be? You know, certainly, I do not believe in my heart, it will be a hazardous dump. And I believe that we do need jobs in this county. GKN has shut, is shutting down and we need new jobs. And sometimes we're going to make sacrifices for that. But at the same time, I also am concerned about the safety and the EMS response to those who are going to be affected. And I think that suggestions that were made today and another fire station maybe that will be closer, suggestions about an alternate route or putting a, another road in. You know, all those are good suggestions, but for this project, I don't believe we're, we are at a point where we can sit back and say, let's wait three more months or four more months and work these things out and say, let's do this road or what are we going to do here? I don't think we have that timeline whatsoever. And I think we are, you know, under the gun on this as far as what we, what we're going to do, what decisions we're going to make. Question, who ma, who's going to make the money? Who's going to make a profit on this? Well, certainly whoever owns the land is going to make a profit on it, there's no doubt about that. If I sell my property, I'm going to make money on it. But at the same time, they may, that whoever's owns the land and they're the ones that are going to make money, the benefit of that is going to be, what does it bring revenue to our county? What does it do for jobs? What does it do for reducing taxes or not raising taxes for our citizens? And again, we do, we, we, I see it every day. I live right off 51 and I go to work, I see it every day. People driving up the road, heading towards Durham. I would love for those people that are heading towards Durham to be able to stay in our county and bring money into our county and have jobs here. And so, because every person I talk to as a county commissioner, what do we need in Person County? It's we need jobs. That's, I hear it, we need jobs. Again, I don't want to sell the farm for the jobs, I don't want to make a bad decision on that, but that is a very important thing for us as an economic development, is having jobs for the future. I'm not going to work if it's a new plant, I'm, I'm at my age, but the younger people in this county need somewhere to go to work. We need to provide jobs for them and we need to provide opportunities. So, that's my thoughts out there as I'm thinking about all of this. And I am concerned about the road closure, about closing it immediately or down the road, what we have to do. But for y'all to know from my perspective, this is a very tough decision that we have to make here tonight in which direction we're going to go. And that's my thoughts for me.
Any others?
I would like to comment off of what Derek mentioned about hazardous waste. Okay, you've had the Army Corps of Engineers, you had EPA all involved. They've given us the permission to create this project, open this land up for development. They would not have given us these grants, granted these hopes and wishes if there would have been any type of hazardous waste mentioned to be dumped or developed on that site.
First off, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. I know there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of questions still to be asked and questions that this board cannot answer for you tonight. I wish I had the answer, I wish I knew who it was and what I could, and just get it out there, but I don't know, only four people in this room know the name of that company. But I can say this, my long tenure as a commissioner, I've never seen a project that is just so secret that the, that the commissioners don't know. But from my experience, something like that is going to be big. And, you know, yes, is this a difficult situation, a difficult decision? Absolutely, because it affects, it affects everyone in this room. I get that. I have been part of decisions that have affected other people in this county from landfills to the MECC, all across the board. Other commissioners in the past that have sat behind this table have made hard decisions in the past when it came to CPNL, when it came to the airport being built, or even the landfill itself back in the mid 90s being built, that had tremendous impact to those communities. And, and sometimes hard decisions have to be made on that. I did appreciate Mr. Fox's comments, I appreciated everyone's comments, but I think there was some value that he said regarding questions, are we just closing the site to make it more, make it more appeasable to other companies? That is not the intent of this board at all. It is not to just close it permanently and hope we get a big fish sometime down the road. My feeling is, if once a decision has been made, I think there's going to be a lot of good things to come from that decision, but I don't think it's going to be a decision that's, you're going to have to just wait and see. I think it's going to be relatively quick on it. And that's why we're having a public hearing here on a Tuesday night for this property. Questions also to be addressed, the EMS factor, the firefight factor. You know, can that road be accessible to EMS personnel, firefighter personnel in emergency situations? You cannot have that discussion until you actually have the client purchase the property. Keep in mind, if that property is, if that property is purchased, they own, they own that right of road. We don't, we don't control when they decide to close the road on it, but we can control when the road can be closed, when, upon the signing of the property transfer on that. So, I will be open to the board, I'll be open to you. I would, I would very much like to see that property, the, the road, even if it's voted to approve the closure today, to remain open until the, the prospect, the business signs the paper and it's, and it's a done deal. And after that point, we don't have a decision to make on that because it is, it is closed itself on that. If we know that something is inimit, we can set it, we can set a date for it. And, you know, I get the inconvenience factor, trust me, I get the inconvenience factor. And if I was, if I lived in Woodsdale, if I lived out in the, that portion of Northern Part of the county, I would be right there with you right now. I get that. This is a tough job to take and you're elected to make tough decisions. You get some easy decisions, you get some tough, some tough decisions. This is one of those tough ones. And, and you know, most of y'all know me, I know you, we, if we see each other in grocery store, we say hello to each other and we, you know, it's just people that we know, that we know here. But I would like to see, you know, upon the completion, if the, if there is a contract between, for the mega site, if there can be dialogue with the company about the thoroughfare remaining open for emergency services and EMS. And I will strive, once everything's become public, to do my best to, to make that possible. But, you know, growing up in this community, I grew up in the northern part of the county too, it was just, wasn't on the other side, I was in Triple Springs. And all you heard was, well, we never get a business in the, we never get anything big in the northern part of the county. Heard that all my life. I will say, in my experience, I truly think this is going to be big. And I do think it's going to be beneficial to Person County on it. So, but I would like tho, I would, those are my thoughts, those are my reflections, especially around the road closure. Even if you did vote to abandon it, have a, you can't put a timeline on it until you know something is firm. And if, by golly, if something does not pass, if it does not go through, we have to, we can, we, we petition the state to, to take it back on it. Because it's not to be closed until we find a site. It's, it's, it's to be closed for this one particular project.
And I'm in total agreeance with Derek and Kyle coming on this. I'm the new one on the board, of course. When I first got a hold of this, I just thought about all the wasted money that we've been putting into this park. I was kind of the, one of the ones that wanted to just, you know what, I'm tired of hearing about it and it's nothing ever happening, kind of, maybe it's time to cut straight. After hearing this, I've changed my viewpoint. It's a lot we don't know, and I hate that part. I mean, I absolutely hate the part, we don't, we don't have the answers to everything. And we're the ones you look for, for answers. But the way everything is sounding, it sounds like something is big that's coming. And it's just, it's too much not to risk. For just inconvenience, and you say inconvenience, I mean, I live on that end of county, I know what's going to affect. But Derek and Kyle, you both put so much, you, you said exactly what I've been thinking this whole time. And of course, thank everyone for coming out and speaking your mind. We take, we listen to every person that come here and we take everything you say seriously. But this is a tough decision.
Sheriff Powell, I do have one more. Like many of you here, most of you here, I was born and raised here. I've used that road for years, upon years, upon years. I still use it on my jobs that I do as a plumber. I still use it on my jobs that I do, as a plumber. It is a big, huge step. But by the gauge, we had a graph at one time that shows the potential structure size. And it was basically encompassing, I would say, 800 of the 950 available acres.
I don't remember the acreage, but I do have the, it was enormous.
So, I'm bouncing off of that. It is a huge potential, and Kyle, and of course Derek. This is a huge potential for this county to grow and to create jobs, to create a better tax base, to keep your taxes low. We've made a lot, we've spent a lot of time talking about this, looking into this. And I think we had up to 60 site visits over the course of the seven years. This is the first that wanted every square inch of that property. I think it's, I think it's very important that we move forward with it.
This is very complex. It's very complicated. It's deep as it is wide, any way you want to look at it. But Commissioner Thomas, I don't know that any three have heard more than the other two or five altogether. We hear it from different circles. I've heard it just as much as you have, from different people. And the same thing with the rest of you here. Pretty much, they're all the same concerns. I, I don't hear anything really that's all significantly different. It's from their perspective and how they look at it, where they live, what they, how they travel that road. It's, it's all a matter of who is in your circle of contacts and who's reaching out to you. And that's what they should do. From my perspective, I've always considered myself to be first, a listener. I don't talk much in the beginning. Certainly, I don't talk any about, any about, anything about something I don't know something about. If I don't know, I don't answer. Then on the other hand, if I'm tied to a non-disclosure agreement, I respect that. And I'm not going out in the community and use the phrase that was used earlier, that loose lips sink chips. So, do we as a commission board pick and choose so much about who's coming here? Because the number one objective, all the years I've been on this board, every election I've been involved in, jobs were the number one request. We've got to have jobs. We've got to have business. We've got to have industry for the county to grow. And so, we have gone through those, and I don't know if it was 60, if it was 20, it really doesn't matter. We're down to one, and this is the only one that we have gotten this far with, as far as developing the mega park. And I would assume, as far as direct involvement, I've been involved with it for eight years. Commissioner Perry has been here longer than I have, but he was not on the EDC board. And so, I think my experiences there are greater than anyone else. That doesn't make me any smarter than anybody else. I have just agonized with it probably more than anybody else in the road. It is hard. It is very difficult. And I hear you. I hear your concern. I live on that side of town, but that's not a road that I frequent, but I have driven on it. So, that, that's, that's not, not my point. I, my point is that I know people that do, live there, travel there. And, and I, and I get it. I totally, fully get it. But the client here is the one making the decision about road closure. And it's not the first one to mention that because it does divide the 1,350 contiguous acres. That, you know, they don't want a highway through the middle of their property. So, and the road just happens to be there. But again, we, this is the first one of the clients that we have actually gotten that far. We've had proposals on the table and some wanted, we had everything from 100 acres to 800 acres. But none came to the point that we are tonight. And, and it has been very, very difficult, hard, wearisome, sleepless nights. You guys don't have to do that, I guess, but as board members, we do. And so, we agonize with you, and, and we do understand and we do get it. But the industrial development there is, has been something we have wanted for a long time. And so, again, this is the, I would say, the best product, best prospect that we have. I regret that there's been confusion about this. And the confusion typically is because of lack of understanding. And we have tried to avoid that with everything possible we could do with the county staff, Director Lynch and, and Manager Kathy, to post on the website everything that we possibly could and maintain that agreement of confidentiality. And so, that's why we haven't released some of the other information. Actually, again, I hate to say it, but we don't know. There are things that we simply do not know. We don't know the job numbers. We don't know the investment numbers. Those are facts and numbers that we, we haven't been told yet. So, we are simply doing the best job we can to bring business and industry and growth into Person County. And I think it's extremely important. Again, I, I regret that we had a lot of confusion and misunderstanding. I actually was a little, I'll just use the word disappointed, well, the word disappointed, in Courier's headline in last Thursday's paper. There was a quote from Commissioner Sims that really gave the impression, as has been mentioned, the deal is done. Well, it's not done. It wasn't done. My vote hasn't occurred yet. I don't know about the others. I don't think anybody's voted yet. So, we're, folks are doing the best we can. And with all things considered, and my involvement with economic development and the cries for jobs and, and the creation of jobs and building the tax base has been the loudest cry that I've heard since I've been on this, on this board. And again, you've got your agonizing side and I've got mine, and it's, it's, it is hard. So, I'll just sort of end with that, that it's, it's difficult and not something that we desire. But it's the desire of the prospect that we're working with right now. And, and that's part of their request. So, it's part of their request of us and part of our consideration. So, that's pretty much my comments.
Commissioner, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, you know, one of the things that, and this has always been a concern with the mega site and what we, what type of company we're in here, has always been the infrastructure of, of our county and the roads, the schools, everything. Because if we were to land a big company, and I don't know how many, do not know how many employees are made here, with the size of that, the, the land and the size of facilities we were looking at in the future, going back 10 years ago, you get a company in here that's going to hire thousands of people, that's going to change our infrastructure. We've got to be able to, there's going to be housing, there's going to be roads, there's going to be different things that will have to take place. And as a county, I think we work through that. And we say, okay, we've got, we've got this opportunity. We also, along with that opportunity, we've got to say, okay, what do we, what do we need? What are we going to do? Does it mean we're going to, you have, you bring that many people into our county, work at this facility? What's that going to do to our schools? Again, and what's it going to do to the neighbors who live on that road? Who I know, your concerns will be how much traffic is going to go up and down that road. So, those are things that, from an infrastructure standpoint, just some of the things that we have to look at, we have to work through. And, and I think when, as Kyle said, when I said the deal's done, what I meant was that if we don't close the road, the deal would be done. Which means that we would not, the, the company will probably not move out here. Didn't mean we already had a done deal. It just meant if they didn't come out here, it's a good, it was a good possibility that they would not continue going on with this project. And we would lose that company and that opportunity for jobs. So, just want to clarify that.
One more comment.
Yes, sir. I don't remember the year, but I remember the North American Free Trade Agreement that destroyed this county. And we've been crying for jobs ever since. We've got a huge potential, huge potential to create, hopefully upwards of hundreds and hundreds of jobs. It would be to me a no-brainer to move, not to move forward with this project, except if they do follow through. And again, we've talked about if they don't, hey, we can open the road back up. We as a county can go to DOT and have them, hey, it's your road again. And there's a lot of unanswered questions, many that you brought forward, many that we've already discussed for, how long now? Couple of years? But we hope for the best. And here's another thing. If there's something that we know that's coming on this property that is going to be detrimental to this county, we can shut it down. It's not going to be a hazardous waste dump. I understand the lady, your daughter is right up above me. I understand your health concerns, and my heart goes out to you, the foxes. And I don't know, do you live on that road?
I, I live on Country Club.
Country Club? That's right. I heard you say that. So, this, the ones who live on the Edwin Robertson Road are the ones who are going to be immediately impacted. The Country Club road this side of town, as you've seen in the graphs that Brandy presented, you might have one or two of them that has like a minute or two longer route to get to point A to point B. But the majority of them are shorter routes than taking the Country Club road. That's all. Good night.
Let me ask the county attorney a question. And county attorney, if, if this is an improper question, please, I will correct myself. So, if we move forward to state that the road will be abandoned at the initial closure, I mean, the closing date of the said property, the mega site.
The date that, um, the buyer would purchase the land.
We don't know. And we would have to, can that be worded in? Or would we have to have another meeting to make to have an effective date on it?
And let me, I'm going to answer your question indirectly. So, like everyone else who's been working on this, there are confidentiality requirements, things I can't discuss. I have communicated with representatives from the prospective buyer. What I can say is that this is serious enough for them. And as members of the board have talked about, the road closure is important enough to them on this project. They are close enough to that date, although I don't know what the date is. They've said that if the board moves to close the road tonight and the board decides that the date title convey should be in the future, it should not be very far out, maybe a week, two weeks, three weeks. So, I say that to convey that, that that's where this project is at. I don't think that answers your question. But what I would say to answer your question is, if the board chooses to have a date in the future, I recommend a date certain. I think there creates some legal ambiguity if you, if you kind of have a moving date where the board has to come back and have another meeting.
All right, let me ask a follow-up question with you. If we name a date, let's say October 30th for the road closure date, and the deal has not happened yet, and, you know, it's still, it's still in the works, can we go back and revise that date until the deal is in the works? Or do you feel, I mean, I'm kind of throwing straws right here at you. Do you feel October 30th would be a suitable date?
I'll be honest with you. I think that date is too late. I think the project is close enough to that, that point with the purchase contract, that a sooner date would be appropriate. But to answer your question, if, say, you pegged October 30th or October 24th or whatever date you want to pick, the statute does not address revising the date. But I do think if you have a date certain in the future where title transfers, then if you follow the public hearing procedure again, so you have to have notice, you have to have another public hearing, I don't see why the board couldn't revise the date. But I will tell you, from what I've had communicated to me, and, and this was sort of where Mr. Sims was going about the project happening or not, I think it's that close to happening or not, and much of it hinges on the road closure. So, I don't say that to advocate one way or the other for closing it. That's, of course, the board's decision, but that's the information I can provide.
All right, I may throw another date out there, October 15th.
I'm just looking at my calendar, sir.
I'm, I'm just throwing out a random date here.
No, that's fine. And I'm, at this point, going to look both to Ms. Lynch and to our county manager. To me, I think October 15th is a date that would work. But if you all have other thoughts, please.
And that is three weeks from today, if I'm looking at the calendar correctly.
I think two weeks is much more progress.
I mean, I, I would tend to err on the side of two weeks, but three weeks may be acceptable. I do not know for sure because I have not had that conversation. I know that our attorney has talked with their attorney. So, he probably has a better sense for it than I do.
And, and I'm not trying to be cagey or cute or anything like that. They haven't said, here's the hard date that you have to have the title effectively transferred. But the range I've given you is what they've been very clear they need to see happen for where they are in the project.
All right. What I'm looking for is a fallback plan. So, in the event that it does not happen, we have enough time to go back and, well, at the, if the deal doesn't happen, we're just going to reverse. If we did vote for it, we would be reversing the decision and petitioning NCDOT. So, that's, that's irrelevant at this point on it. But I'm just, I don't want to tie ourselves together of abandoning that road permanently before something happens.
So, to, to that question, I'm looking at the statute right now. And the notice that the board has to give for a new public hearing is once a week for three weeks. So, I suppose if you wanted, you could, so today is the, you could have an effective date of, say, October 17th. And then if the board needed to provide notice of a new public hearing, that could be done. I, I do think that, well, I, I think that's about all I can say at this point.
Chairman Powell?
Yes, sir. Please.
I'd like to insert one more thought to the board. Do we want to create a stumbling block to crash this potential project? You don't have to answer. Just think about it.
Your thoughts again on, you, you know the parameters we're working in and what we're, with, all things considered?
My sense from when we first talked about the conversation you had was that two, two weeks was kind of their limit. I, I don't know if you're pushing it a bit on the kind of their limit. I, I don't know if you're pushing it a bit on the three or not, but, um, I think two was what they had originally indicated they were comfortable with. I mean, that's, that was what I was, what I heard when, when we had the follow-up conversation.
And let me just say, I concur with the county manager. I'm trying to think creatively to address some of the concerns that have been raised. So as a kind of a matter of law, you may have more time, but I think two weeks is, I, I personally would be more comfortable with that number.
For the projects that emit at this point?
Yes, sir.
All right. Another follow-up question to you, since, um, you can talk to them and I can't. Has, um, there any, has there been any discussion regarding emergency services and fire services being able to access that even after the, the closure date on that? Has that been addressed with them?
There has been some discussion about EMS, fire, emergency response. Um, those topics have been discussed with them. I don't have the specifics of that to share, or ultimately what, you know, what any arrangement might be identified that may help in that area, but we have broached that topic. That, that it is a concern that has been expressed.
Chairman, I got a question.
Is that it?
Can I ask a question?
Now, the public hearing part of it's closed, sir. I'm sorry. Were you, you're about to say something? All right. Let's get back then to the original point that we were, yeah, on the agenda. We were talking about, uh, the motion. So,
Yes, sir.
Which one is, all things considered, with this discussion now, which is more appropriate? That we address what this, section two effective date?
I think if the board is satisfied with the finding about, um, uh, not contrary to the public interest in that individuals have egress and ingress, then selecting that date for when title would transfer would be the next for the board to, um,
Before we vote, vote about.
Yes, sir. I would, I would have that date set before a formal one is made.
Yeah, it is. And on the front page of that is section, section two, and there is a blank. So what date do we want to put in there on? Or have a motion to put in there?
So there's, is there a specific project?
Sir?
No, because the, the, the notice said there's not a specific project, but now you are talking like there is one.
Sir?
I just want you to clarify.
All right. I just, I just want you to understand the public comment part of this meeting.
I understand that.
That's closed. Okay. Would you like to remain in this room, sir?
I would, sir.
Okay?
But I would like you to.
Officer, please come in here, please, and speak to that gentleman.
All right.
Good day.
Hey, Kyle, I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Well, listen.
Now, wait a minute. I'm talking.
Okay.
All right. About the motion and the date. See, we can't, can't get that done, Kyle. Then we'll come back.
Okay.
Okay, we're,
All right.
Got something on the floor here.
What I,
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. What I was, you know, I know emotions can get, this is a very sensitive, sensitive topic and everything. And, uh, and, um, I'm trying to remember, I had one up follow-up question. I kind of, y'all go ahead and talk, and I'll come back to my.
Yes. So I think you were going to ask the board about a date.
Yes.
Sounds like Mr. Perry may have a.
So is that related to this date?
Yes, it was. No, it just came back to me.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. What type of procedures or awareness, if potentially we do agree on a date? What type of public awareness are, I mean, my concern is making the public fully aware of that, that portion of, I mean, what measures are going to be in place? What type of notices? What type of, are we going to have flashing lights? Are we going to have? I mean, the last thing I want is someone going on that road not realizing what has happened, and a barricade being right there, and you're going sixty miles an hour and running into a barricade. What type of prevention, preventive measures are going to possibly put in place for that?
So there will be required signage. Some of that was depicted in the diagram that Brandy showed towards the end of her, um, presentation. So we will ensure that all of the signage is installed per DOT guidelines. So that is going to be one very apparent way to, uh, and we'll, we would work to get that installed as soon as possible to notify travelers in that area. We will also utilize our other means of communication, such as social media, our website, um, the newspaper, I'm sure, can help us, uh, get the word out, the radio station. Um, we utilize those, uh, communication mechanisms as well, and of course, would ask the public to help us spread the word.
Well, it's hard to talk to a client, I mean, a prospect, when you can't be directly involved with the conversation on it. But I think everyone in this room has a better understanding of where we're at with, with this project on it. All I can say this, and this is all I can promise you. Once this, if it comes here, and if it's announced, and we know who it is, I will do everything in my ability to make the, this company understand how important being involved with the community, and maybe something can be worked out. But I have, I really, since you can't have a direct conversation with them, you can't go to the table. You have to get them to the table first, and the only way to get them to the table is to, for them to, um, purchase this property, property. And I think if, once, you know, I can't speak for them, but if, if they purchase the property, unless it's on some type of holding company, that's, that's public notice, that's public information on who purchased the property. So I think things will probably be on a fast track then. I just want everyone to know, Mr. Fong, I, you are absolutely going to be the, the worst one affected here. And I, I'm sincerely sorry about it. Um, but I will do everything that I possibly can do to, to promote them being a good steward to the neighbors, and maybe something can be worked out among the, among the company itself, if they want to be good stewards in, in our community. That's, that's my pledge I'm giving to you right now. Um, and, uh, I hope you can, um, that's, that's the best, that's the best that I can give you right now on that. So, but I do, I do appreciate everyone being here. These, these meetings are always really tough to go by, and, um, and it's hard for everyone on, on here because we're having to make a, a decision, and, um, and I've tried to paint the picture as best possible tonight for, for everyone on it. So, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, what was the date that you and the county attorney?
Um, this is really per the suggestion that the manager had made. I would suggest October eighth, excuse me, eighth.
October eighth?
Yes, sir. So that would be two weeks from today.
Okay, with that date set, uh, do we have a motion, uh, for approval for that date, October eighth effective?
And again, before, we, do we reinforce that we feel highly confident that we're not going to have to come back here and do this, and, and revisit it? That we feel something will be done by this date?
Um, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone making a motion?
I'll be the one to do it. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to, for the, um, closing of the portion of the road with the addition to section two effective on October eighth. Is that, is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
That's good. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Per the discussion, any comments? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
One. One opposed. Got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I have four one.
Okay. All right. All right. Now, the next one there would be, um, the motion to approve in order to close.
Um,
We've already done it.
That's the order.
Do that all-inclusive, yeah?
So, uh, Mr. Perry's motion was sufficient to approve the order.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So that's done. And, Mr. Perry, I would say your comments about your promises for the future would be a consensus agreement around this table. I don't think there's anybody sitting here that would not agree with, with what you said, and, uh, because we think the same way. And we're, uh, aware of the concerns of the community, and we want, we want to make the statement again, everything's better in person. We make it better by doing the right thing, and we try to do the right thing. Uh, however, there are steps in this process, and we're painfully going through some of those steps to get to the point that, that you mentioned. And, uh, and some things will change as we go along. Uh, new concepts, new ideas, new, um, involvement with, uh, with the client, I hope and think will materialize, and they'll become a, uh, once done, and, you know, I'm saying the if, but, uh, become an integral part of life in Person County and, um, and be a good corporate citizen that we, that we look forward to working with.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will ask. Mr. Chairman, I will ask if there's any deviation from this, that the county manager and the county attorney from this date, and it appears to be on a, on a different timeline, that this board to be immediately notified.
Yes, sir.
And if necessary, we, um, uh, discuss necessary ma, uh, measures after that point.
Is reasonable. Sure.
And when I mean deviate, you understand what I mean by deviate?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, then, nothing else. We're clear. Mr. Chairman, you all done?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, and the next quarter of business would be a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor? Well, comments, anybody? Anybody opposed? All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Thank you.